All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the meeting pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes. Notice of this meeting was given on March 35th, or let me start over.
September 1st.
On September 1st, 2023. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the Board President. Please attend the entire meeting to assure that you're able to hear any of the discussion. Also pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Omaha School Employees Retirement Board, Retirement System Board of Trustees will be held on Thursday, December 7th, 2023, at 4:00 p.m. in the boardroom here at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the retirement office at the Teacher Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted on the board meeting room on the north wall. With that, Mr. Ryan, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Born?
Here.
Ms. Erdnberger?
Here.
Ms. Block?
Here.
Mr. Head?
Present.
Mr. Hirschenbach?
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Present.
Six present, one absent.
Okay, we have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Trustees with comments and opinions. As a reminder, with last year's passage of LB83 by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Trustees is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the Board to identify himself or herself, including an address, the name of any organization you may represent. Please state and spell your name and state your address for the record at the beginning of your comments. If you have materials to distribute, please let me know and Mr. Ryan will come and get them from you. So with that, is there anyone present here today that would like to address the Board of Trustees?
My name is Roger Ray, spelled R-O-G-E-R, R-E-A. My address is 12914 Pacific Street here in Omaha, and I'm representing myself as a citizen and a member of the retirement system today. I'm glad to see that the Board of Trustees is meeting today. I hope that the summary of this meeting and summary of the activities of the OSERS Board will be distributed to the members of the system, retirees, of which I am one. I have very little contact with the retirement system over the last couple of years, and I hope that that kind of contact can be increased in the future. As this transition occurs and makes the finalization towards the state retirement system, it's important for all the members of the retirement system to be comfortable with that retirement system switch, that governance change, as well as the management change. And I think the retirement system owes it to the retirees to maintain that communication. So I'm looking forward to, I heard that there was a schedule for newsletters coming out after the board meetings for the next couple of months. I'm looking forward to seeing something soon. I'm glad to respond to any comments or questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Ray? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to address the board? All right, seeing no further public comments, we'll move on with the agenda. The next item is approval of the June 21st meeting minutes. The minutes of the last OSERS Board meeting, Board of Trustees meeting on Thursday, April 6th, 2023, have been presented for your review. Are there any amendments or corrections? Sorry, yeah, June, June 1st, sorry. All right, I would entertain a motion, a motion by Jane, second and by?
I'll second.
Mr. Ryan, would you call the roll?
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Ms. Erdnberger?
Yes.
Ms. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Head?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Six eyes.
All right, the minutes are approved. The next agenda item is one that we have talked about a little bit, and I thought it would be helpful if we got some clarity as to the various roles and responsibilities of OSERS and some of the other ad hoc committees. So Mr. Ryan's going to review the various roles and responsibilities for OSERS itself, the OPS Board of Education, the Ad Hoc Board Committee, the Board of Trustees, and then the OSERS N-Pers Steering Committee. So, you know, hopefully we'll have questions on this, but again, the intent is to offer up any clarity about what roles the various committees have as we work our way through this transition, so.
Thank you, Mr. Born. As you noted, there are four separate groups that have significant roles and responsibilities related to OSERS, the Board of Education, the Board Ad Hoc Committee for OSERS, the OSERS Board of Trustees, and the N-Pers Transition Steering Committee. The responsibilities of the Board of Education and the Board of Trustees are outlined in statute, while the Board Ad Hoc Committee and N-Pers Steering Committee are more general oversight groups that receive updates on information. The Board of Education really has the final responsibility for the OSERS retirement system the way statutes are currently drafted. They are responsible for appointing the Board of Trustees and providing direction to the Board of Trustees. They're also responsible for appointing the administrator. They currently review and approve all disbursements, including the monthly benefit payroll payments in total, refunds of contributions and interest monthly as they are distributed, and operating expenses as they are presented for payment. They also receive notification of all retirements and separations of employments in a staffing report on the regular agenda meetings. The Board Ad Hoc Committee is a small group of the Board of Education that has met as needed over the past several years. We are planning to have a more regular cadence moving forward with updates on the transition now that there is more regular activity and information to report up on that, and I'll cover those transition activities here in a subsequent agenda item. The Board of Trustees is directed by the Board of Education. They're to hold regular meetings annually and special meetings as needed, supervise the affairs of the retirement system related to the administration of benefits, and facilitate the transition and transfer of management and general administration of the retirement system to N-Pers, and OSER staff is currently working on that. The Steering Committee is a joint committee made up of individuals from the Nebraska Public Employees Retirement System, OSER staff, OPS staff, and the vendor, Linea, that N-Pers selected to do the data migration and the programming for their computer system that they use to manage the retirement systems at the state. This group meets monthly to monitor transition progress and review administrative issues related to the transition. It's a very high-level summary, but that is basically what the reporting structure is at this point in time, with the Board having ultimate oversight over all activities related to OSERS in statute.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ryan? Jane?
Could you give an example, you said that you're meeting monthly to identify what's happening and what glitches there are and stuff, so what, what do you, give me an example of a glitch. What sorts of things are you fixing as you go along, just so I can kind of understand how the transfer works more than anything else?
So, we receive an update monthly on progress being made by the transition team and any roadblocks. In the past month, in August, there was a concern that the timeline wasn't being adhered to as closely as practical, and so there was a request from N-Pers for more regular meetings with OSERS and OPS staff to help transmit information. Some of the things that we have talked about in the past include multiple, excuse me, retirement benefit payments being made to multiple accounts for a single individual. Currently, the state does not support that, and so an agreement was made that we would, once the transition is made over to N-Pers, retirees would only be able to receive their benefit payment into a single account, and communication regarding that to individuals will be done at an appropriate time. And the most important outcome of that agreement was that no future retirees prior to the transition would be allowed to sign up for multiple accounts.
So it's mostly identifying the differences between sort of the operations-
Yes.
-at N-Pers, and you don't necessarily know them all at the get-go?
Correct.
It's as we go along, and so those are the things that you're identifying?
So, any non-statutory responsibility? And so if there are some constraints on N-Pers' side, or they have different processes, if that isn't meaningfully detrimental to the OSERS members, we negotiate and talk and come to conclusions on what the best practice would be moving forward.
So, Mr. Ryan, so how do you kind of envision the communication on this? So, I mean, on this board, we've got a couple of members of the actual OPS school board, so I assume that, you know, they'll take that information back and share it. Kind of thinking about the recent audit, you know, and every audit, there's always a thing or two to fix, but who's responsible for making sure, I mean, historically, that would have been OSERS, now it's not, so, you know, just talk a little bit more about the communication amongst these four subcommittees. Anything, kind of follow up on what Jane mentioned, any hanging issues, and then again, how we're going to effectively communicate, anything that needs to be communicated to the members of the plan?
Certainly. A lot to unpack in that question.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. So, again, with the Board of Education's ultimate responsibility for OSERS, audit findings have been, results have been communicated with the Budget and Audit Committee for the Board. We're reporting out the audit results at this regular meeting of the OSERS Board of Trustees, and we will, as we schedule more regular cadence of meetings with the Board Ad Hoc Committee, more of that communication will come out and then be reported out in the committee reports to the full Board of Education. I would anticipate, as we have those Board Ad Hoc Committees, that any information shared with them, as appropriate, would be shared with the Board of Trustees, and I can't think of anything that wouldn't be appropriate in that sense, but just recognizing the roles and responsibilities. But I would anticipate that being forwarded out to the Board of Trustees. Communication is something that we are very committed to. As Mr. Ray mentioned in his public comment, we do have a scheduled mailed hard copy communication out to all members, both active and retired. That should come out by the end of September, early October at the latest, with just a brief update on the transition. We anticipate doing two more mailings similar to that in 2024, and we'll also be working with N-Pers as they coordinate their transition communication plan.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Ryan? All right, seeing none.
All right.
Thank you.
Excellent.
We'll move on. Next agenda item is update on OSERS 2024 transition to N-Pers, and Mr. Ryan, with an update on that?
So, work is progressing at a very brisk pace at this point in time. We're currently working in three broad areas, the same areas as I communicated at our last meeting, business process analysis, data conversion, and system development. Several meetings are being held weekly with OSERS, OPS, N-Pers, and vendor staff to complete tasks related to the transition. We did have some timing constraints during the summertime and did fall a little bit behind the vendor's preferred timeline, but with built-in contingency time, we're scheduling additional meetings and are getting caught back up to an acceptable spot to ensure the transition will happen by September 1st, and we feel very good about where we're at with the additional meetings that have been scheduled on that. It's a very complex task, and it's interesting sitting in on some of these meetings. We get way down in the weeds. The data conversion piece has probably been the piece that's caused the biggest issue in the timeline, and in identifying each individual piece of information that N-Pers currently has in their system for the retirement plans they administer, and crosswalking that to the data that we have in our system, and stacking hands and agreeing that we have the right information that we're transmitting. An example of that is we may have, we may actually have multiple addresses for a member in the PeopleSoft system that we use to manage the OSER system, and so identifying the exact right address to use out of the multiple addresses that may be recorded in there is something that has taken some time and effort and going over. Most recently, we've been working on the layout of the data file that we'll use to transmit all of the wage and service time information to N-Pers on a monthly basis. And so, as you might imagine, that's a file that contains a lot of information about each individual member, and then when you multiply that by the thousands of employees who are contributing members on an ongoing basis, making sure that we're pulling the right information out of our system to report to the state is of paramount importance. We want to make sure that N-Pers gets the correct service time earned during the reporting period, the correct amount of wages earned during the reporting period, and the correct amount of contributions, and all the other relevant information that they need to ensure that all the information is credited to the correct account. So it's just a time-staking process. You just have to go through it literally line by line, and something that seems at a 50,000-foot level pretty easy, yeah, you just take their salary, and you take the number of hours they're supposed to work, and you just kick that over, and it's never that simple. And so as we worked through those processes, and as those software engineers and those data experts start talking to each other, the weeds get very deep very quickly. And so what seems like should be able to be accomplished in an hour maybe takes two to three hours to really hash out those differences. Some responsibility of that comes from both sides, from both entities, whether that be N-Pers and their vendor, or OPS and OSER staff, but we feel that we're working well together. We have a steering committee meeting for our next regular update on Monday, and I spoke with Mr. Tyler Cummings, the N-Pers Deputy Director and soon-to-be OSERS Plan Manager at N-Pers, and we were talking about the transition, and he felt comfortable where we are at as well. And to help provide some additional comfort with that, I've inquired about whether or not he and Mr. Morante would be able to come to the December 7th meeting and speak to the Board and give their perspective on the update. But I'm confident that everything is on track for the September 1st, 2024 conversion, and we have deployed extra resources where necessary to make sure that we keep things moving in the right direction.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Ray? Jane?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, interim superintendent Ray. Okay, so right now, we're trying to figure out how to get the information that we've got in our system to be able to send it appropriately down to N-Pers, but once we have reprogrammed our systems, that we won't, we don't have to keep doing that, right?
So it will become a routine task, right? So right now, the heavy lift is them telling us what information they need, us crosswalking that into the information that we collect currently, and making sure that they overlap and we provide them everything that they need, and then building the routine query and report to gather that information on a monthly basis and report it to N-Pers timely. So it will become a very routine task once it's done, that happens monthly, but the man-hours going into building that are pretty significant.
So I guess that's what I was asking, was having identified it and where it is in our system, we are then creating the program to be able to-
Correct.
...find it and send it.
Yes.
Now, this is perhaps off-topic, but at one point, we were talking about PeopleSoft not being our, I don't know, provider or whatever that is anymore, so will we have to do all this again when we switch from PeopleSoft?
Short answer is yes. Three to five years down the road. The silver lining is that we now know what N-Pers needs. So three months ago, we knew what they needed, but we didn't know exactly what they needed and in exactly the format. So when we do make a change to our accounting and HR software, that will be one of the major functions that we will make sure is part of the implementation and evaluation of any new future system.
So in some respects, having programmed PeopleSoft to do what it's supposed to do, when we get the new system, it'll be between PeopleSoft and the new system-
Correct.
...to make sure the new system does what it's supposed to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Ryan? So let me ask you this, if, so say you feel like the train's coming off the track, or pick a metaphor, wheels coming off the bus, or whatever, where do you go to ring the alarm bell? You know, which, again, which of these four committees do you go to, to say, hey, I need a resource, or, you know, this is behind schedule, or, you see what I'm asking?
Sure.
I just want to make sure that, you know, you have an avenue for if you feel like it's not going as it should, you know, that you have somewhere to go and muster resources, so to speak.
Great question. Mr. Ray regularly attends these monthly steering committee meetings, so he is very aware of the progress being made and the challenges, and at this point in time, resources have not been an issue, once we've identified the right priorities for those resources. And so one of the things that we've done to help address any limitations or constraint on our side is gone out and sought third-party vendors that could help provide some expertise. With the retirement of Doug Taylor from IMS three years ago, and Mr. Ellis last July, there is a significant amount of historical knowledge related to the OSERS pension system and PeopleSoft that is no longer available to us. So working with Mr. Dunn in the district's IMS division, we identified a resource that manages the PeopleSoft implementation of a pension module for a state pension plan, and they've been able to provide some assistance in evaluating some of the questions that we've received from N-Pers and Linea. So Mr. Ray is typically very aware of those. If there was something that came up outside the scope of a meeting he was in, he would be the first person I would contact to help prioritize and free up resources and gain additional resources if necessary.
That's it. Thank you. Jane, you bet?
Looking at the chart that you've got up there now, I see that you've got something that's in the fourth line from the bottom, user acceptance testing and training, and that starts in January of 2024. Does that mean that there will be some OSERS people that will be connected to N-Pers instead as sort of a test thing, or what is that referring to?
So this is from Linea, the vendor that N-Pers is using for their system. The user acceptance testing would be them actually testing the system. That may involve some overlap with our office. I would anticipate that we would provide them a data migration, a set of information at a point in time for them to populate their system with, and then do processing functions, and they would want to compare the outcomes of their system to what PeopleSoft currently outputs. So for instance, they might do a retirement calculation on a specific individual's data that's masked at N-Pers, and then they would ask us to calculate that in N-Pers, and we would compare notes and make sure that their calculation agreed to our calculation.
But it doesn't involve any beneficiaries of the-
No.
...pension plan?
No, that user-
It's just dry-run information between the two systems?
Correct.
My other question is where you have the little diamond, and it's the go-live date. It looks like it's between June and July of next summer, and how does that compare to the September 24 deadline?
So September 1st, 2024 is when N-Pers statutorily becomes responsible for the administration and management of OSERS. That July 1st go-live is when their system needs to be done, and we would anticipate doing some parallel testing, i.e., again, they would have a set of data as of a point in time, they would run all the normal processes, and then we would compare that the benefit payments calculated the same as their benefit payments calculated the same as our benefit payments. Their update of service time earned and contributions and interest earned for the active members and non-vested members, term to non-vested members, excuse me, match hours when we run our practice. So that's their go-live, that they have everything ready to go, and we're just going to do some final parallel testing for the last two months.
But September 1st is the date when people will start getting, well, I guess that's my next question is-
Sure.
-if, and this is, I'm hopefully, this is a question that I think Walter Sue just had, so hopefully I'm translating it correctly, but right now, people log into the OSERS website to check out information and so on and so forth. Will they still be using the OSERS website, or will they become N-Pers, or is it the OSERS tab on the N-Pers? I mean, how do they log in to get their information, and when does that happen?
Hmm, so.
Okay, is it not even the right question?
So I'm going to parse that a little bit. So the current OPS.org backslash retirement, that website information would migrate in some way, shape, or form to the N-Pers website. We would no longer maintain a separate standalone webpage, but probably would have to consult with Mr. Maskell in OPS Communications, but would probably have a redirect link to that. So if people are comfortable going one place, we would have it there for an extended period of time, but it would not have any real information, it would just have a link to redirect to the appropriate spot on the N-Pers website. When you say login and look at things, I'm a little puzzled by that question.
Yikes.
Currently, the OSERS website, the retirement office website, does not have anything that you log into. Some employees who retired after we adopted Active Directory, I think, may still be able to log in and see their OSERS pay stub in retirement, and that would go away if that is the situation you're referring to.
I think it is. I think I'm on behalf of Ms. Dodd.
Right.
I think I'm referring to OSERS members being able to look at specific information about their account, so to speak, and that's not even something that we do right now?
So only a subset of OSERS retirees would have access to that still through Active Directory.
I'm not going to pursue the question since I don't know what it is, but I will recommend that Ms. Dodd reach out to you with her question. Thank you very much, appreciate your patience.
You're welcome.
Additional questions? So we've talked a lot about OPS's resources and OSERS's resources, but as you were explaining, it made me think that there's quite a bit of resource demand at the state level. Any challenges there? I mean, are you getting your needs met from the state in terms of the transition?
So after some, this is a difficult process. So some of their concerns with us was not providing information in a timely enough fashion. Some of our concerns from them was not asking the right questions in a timely enough fashion for us to meet their deadlines. So after some conversations about that, we're on a good, we're in a good spot. I mean, I think they've been more, they've done a better job of giving us what they want to cover more than a day in advance, and that has allowed us to make sure that we have the information the best that we can for the meeting to go over and discuss it. So I think they are very committed to a successful transition as well. I look forward to meeting with Mr. Morante, the new executive director, when he starts on September 19th. I saw him at the Nebraska Investment Council meeting today, and we exchanged cell phone numbers, and so we plan on getting together sometime in the near future after he assumes that new role. And as I said, I think it's very important for he and Mr. Cummings to have an opportunity to come talk with the Board in a public setting. to come talk with the board in a public setting and give their perspective on how things are going, which I don't anticipate to be any different than mine. It's a hard process, but we have a plan that we at OPS and OSERS are committed to providing them all the information they can, that we can, that they need to have a successful transition.
Thank you, thank you for proactively asking them to come to the next meeting. I think that's a wise move, so I appreciate it.
I had hoped to have Mr. Hayes here, but unfortunately, that did not work out so well for Mr. Hayes.
Understood, but thanks again for being proactive. Any additional questions? All right, excellent, thank you. Appreciate the update. Thank you. All right, so with that, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
If, if, if I could go over this next slide. So, Randy Gurke is officially retiring, finally, tomorrow, after thinking he was retiring in early June. As I noted, Jason Hayes was selected as the executive director. He was not confirmed by the legislature after it was reconsidered, so a second round of applications were held, and State Treasurer John Morante was selected and will assume the position on September 19. He said as soon as they can change his signature on all the state checks. That's the only thing holding up, taking the position sooner than the 19th, and that is pending confirmation during the 2024 legislative session. So, just wanted to make sure, brought you up to date on that.
Excellent, thank you. Sorry, I tried to cut you off.
Nope.
All right, last chance, any questions for Mr. Ryan on the transition? Okay, so we'll move to the next agenda item, which is the OSERS audit. So, again, Mr. Ryan will now provide an update on the OSERS audit report, the auditor's findings and recommendations.
So, the Auditor of Public Accounts issued their report in late June. There was an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, so they are fairly presented and materially correct. The management letter had many more findings than I had hoped for, and so we are committed to doing a better job on getting the prior year findings remediated and the current year findings that were identified by the state auditors. There were a total of seven comments and recommendations in the management letter that was attached to the audit report. Four are considered significant deficiencies, three are considered control deficiencies. The arrows on the bottom of the page show the order of significance of those deficiencies, with control deficiency being the least significant, significant deficiency being the middle ground, and a material weakness being the most severe deficiency. A material weakness would indicate that our internal controls could not materially present the financial statements correctly. And so, we are pleased that we had none of those. We always strive to have nothing of that level. The significant deficiencies are very important items that we are addressing currently and will have resolved by the end of the year, as well as the control deficiencies. So, the first significant deficiency was the control environment. Issues noted include staff turnover, infrequent trustee meetings, delay in providing information, and prior year findings not being corrected. We have with us now Ms. Brendan Norton, who has taken over as the office manager in the retirement office and is supervising Mr. Desick and the other two individuals that we have on staff in the retirement office. We're now holding quarterly trustee meetings. Next regularly scheduled meeting will be December 7, and we'll have a calendar for your consideration for 2024 at that point in time. And the additional staff that we have will help address delays in next year's audit. The prior year findings mentioned included an incorrect COLA for a time period in September 2014 to July 2015, the medical COLA not being calculated correctly for a subset of the retirees receiving that, no COLA for the state service annuity, and the state service annuity being deferred until age 60. We are currently actively addressing all of those issues. The medical COLA will be done correctly, beginning with the October 3 medical COLA, that's when that gets issued annually. The COLA for the state service annuity, we are currently working with Empers and CavMac on calculating that correctly and receiving additional funding from the state for that cost of living adjustment. That is something that has not been done in the past, and so the contribution from the state for that annuity has not been paid for, the COLA piece. And so, we're working with Empers on updating the funding for that COLA as part of the state service annuity. We've also historically not provided the state service annuity until age 60. Per the Auditor of Public Accounts opinion and confirmation with OSERS legal opinion, it is appropriate to provide that state service annuity at a reduced level immediately upon retirement, and we have, I believe it's 38 individuals who are currently younger than age 60 in deferred status, and we will be contacting them to see if they want to begin receiving that immediately, or continue to wait for a higher monthly amount when they turn age 60. Final average compensation, the rules and regs do not agree to state statute. The good news with that is that we were calculating the final average compensation per state statute, so we didn't have instances of an incorrect amount. So, we'll work to get rules and regs to agree to state statute. The same thing with salary capping. Statute says you can have an 8% increase year over year. The rules and regs currently state that it's 8% compounded, so you only get 8% increase over the prior 8% capping. So, again, we'll be working on getting that updated in the rules and regs to conform to state statute. During, in January, we had an unintended change in the accounting system that caused some members, all members balances to be stated incorrectly in the system. It was an unintentional error while addressing a matter that needed to be corrected, so refunds could be processed in December. Because of that unintended change that was not detected when it was made, refunds in January and February were incorrect. The system calculation was corrected in May, and current balances are all correct in the system at this point in time. We had a copy of the system prior to that change being made, so we were able to validate and verify balances, and we are working on reviewing those incorrect refunds, and we'll be making additional payments for any underpayments, or contacting affected members that received an overpayment to recoup those. On the financial statements, we had five adjusting entries to the financial statements totaling six, almost $7 million, and three adjustments to the amounts in the footnotes totaling $8.7 million. Those were related to the reporting of the various investments that the board has and working through the appropriate accounting standards to report those accurately. Very much appreciated the auditor pointing those errors out to us. We work closely with the state accounting system to get that information and get it into a format that's appropriate, and unfortunately, there were some errors that got through the review process, but the auditors noted those corrections were made. So, we're reviewing that process and working with the state accounting system to get that information in an appropriate format. Benefits and refund processing, actuarial factors had not been updated in the accounting system. There was capping that was incorrect for one member, adjustments to the final average compensation was incorrect for two members, service credit incorrect for two members, an annuity amount incorrect for one member, and a tax withholding amount incorrect for one member. We always strive to not have any errors. Unfortunately, those do happen. I was pleased in their sampling, and they did just test a sample, but the errors that they did noted were very small, not to minimize. One or two is not where we want to be, but unfortunately, human error does happen, and so we're working on our processes now that we're back up to four members full-time in the office. We've established a documented review process, so one person would do a calculation on the final average compensation, and that would be reviewed by a second individual. When we were down to essentially two people in the office, unfortunately, we weren't able to do that as much as we needed to, and so we're working through that. We also had some comments on lack of documentation. We weren't date stamping when the retirement applications were received to help them test to make sure that we were providing payments within the appropriate timeline. We also need to update our proof of age in rules and regs. We have historically accepted a driver's license as proof of how old an individual is. Unfortunately, our rules and regs don't have driver's license outline, stated as an acceptable proof of age, so we just need to get that updated. With the departure of a staff member, we had not sent an updated roster of all members to the contractor that does our death audit to review any deceased members on a monthly basis. We have addressed that and are sending them quarterly rosters of all active and retired members. And then we had a rollover refund for one member that should have had a required minimum deduction because they made the rollover after they were 72, and so a percentage of that should have been paid directly to them instead of rolled over into a separate retirement account. And refunds for two members were issued sooner than rules and regs allow. Currently, a refund is issued the earlier, or, excuse me, the later of four months after separation, or 20 days after requesting a refund, and we had two individuals that received a refund in three months instead of four months. So, we're working on updating the actuarial information in the system, reviewing the calculation of capping and final average compensation, documenting that review, reviewing processes for tax withholding and direct deposits, ensuring proper documentation is maintained. We'll be working on proposing changes to the rules and regs for proof of age. We're in process of submitting membership information to the death audit vendor and a review process for refunds. Purchase service calculations, individuals have the opportunity to buy, purchase service either from a prior school district where they worked at, or an all-purpose buy-in of up to five years, or purchase of any military leave that they've had. We had, the auditors noted the cost of purchase services was not calculated correctly. The interest rate for the monthly payments, if they did installment purchases, was not correct. Service credit purchased was not updated in the system, and the district did overpay a match on one of the purchases of services. We've reviewed the spreadsheet and updated the calculations, and the calculations have been updated by the actuary, including interest for monthly payments, and we have a review process for updating the purchase service and the processes for required district match. None of those errors happened during the past fiscal year. They were reviewing some of the installment purchases of services that were in progress, and so those were something that had happened more than a year ago. Service credit issues, we had some system issues with the calculation of service credit for hours for two hourly employees, and for service credit years for two salaried employees. Both of those have been addressed in the system to ensure the right type of pay is being recognized by the service credit system. This will be something that will be a key area of focus when we move to the monthly reporting to Empers. In the past, we've been able to address these in-house, if you will, when there was a service credit error in calculating the information, because the retirement office staff was able to work directly with HR and payroll to review that information if something didn't look right. We know moving forward that that's going to be a much more cumbersome process, and we want to make sure that Empers has accurate information and correct information, so they don't have to come back to the district years after potentially any type of service credit issues and have to go through and research that. So, that's something that, Ms. Erdnberger, as you talked about in developing that process of reporting the information, a key piece of that is not, is going to be something more than just pressing a button and running a report. It's going to be going through that report, identifying outliers, looking for inconsistencies, and doing some sampling to make sure that the information is as accurate as possible. We understand that sometimes our timekeepers out in the school buildings have challenges and aren't always able to get everything entered into the system appropriately or in a timely fashion, and so when we see some things that don't look quite right, we want to make sure that we ask and follow up on that. One of the big things in our, working through that process, was stacking hands on when we would actually report information, and we all agreed that we needed to report information that had gone through all the payroll processes and not be reporting any interim hours when a biweekly period crosses over a month end. So, something that we're very aware of and working diligently on. PeopleSoft issues, we had, PeopleSoft is an older system. It doesn't have a lot of documentation of changes that, in the current implementation, and so we're working with IMS to make sure that we review system configuration for any workflow settings that can be implemented and enable history tracking for data tables in the system. So, if a record is changed in the system, it's recorded in a separate table as a change having been made, so that we can go back through and identify that change. A lot of information there.
What's going on?
It was not pretty. We, it's not what we wanted to have as the outcome, and we know that we need to do a better job, and we are committed to doing a better job. It was, I'm very embarrassed at the results and the things that the auditor found, but we are committed to remediating them and getting corrective action in place and making sure that all the financial data of the members is accurate and reported to Empers and converted to them accurately at the end of the year. And there will be some audit pieces related to that when we go through that transmittal process.
Excellent, thank you. I think Spencer has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Born. So, could you walk me through real quick? I think it was the state service annuity, you said that we've been paying it, or historically we've been starting at the age of 60?
Yes.
So, just hypothetical, if we've got somebody who's currently 65, but they retired at 58, are we giving them the ability to go back and look at, you know, had they started it at 58, what their payments would be, or is it just anybody from the time the audit was given going forward?
Sorry, it would be on a prospective basis. So, the amount of their benefit would have been calculated based on actuarial factors, beginning to receive the benefit at age 60 or 65, or whatever year they elected it. So, for those individuals who are currently in a deferred status because they're younger than age 60, on the recommendation of the auditor, we will offer them the opportunity to get a reduced benefit, a further reduced benefit. You receive full benefit at age 65. The piece where we will be asking for additional funding from the state on is on the COLA piece. The actuarial factors did not have the COLA as part of their calculation on what the lump sum that the state sends to us when a member begins receiving that. So, there will be some amount of money that we will need to request from the state for that COLA piece moving forward for all existing members, but there, at this point in time, there is an intention of a retrospective.
All right, thank you.
All right, other questions? Ms. Erdnberger?
Thank you. I'm reminded of an incident that occurred with a friend of mine when I was younger. She and her husband both left in the morning for work thinking the other one had taken their child to daycare. And when the painter arrived, he called my friend and said, "Did you know Jimmy is still in the house?" So I know that sometimes when there's a lot of movement going on, things get left behind or overlooked. Would you say that this long list that you wish didn't exist was primarily, or a combination of the staffing, the, or the lack of staffing, the turnover in staffing, the fact that we're in the middle of doing the transition? And I'm trying to figure out why all of, we, we get audited every year by our auditors. Why is all of this, what's the difference between what our auditors were doing and the state auditor? Because it seems like some of this should have been identified before now.
That is a great question. So the retirement of Ms. Carter and Mr. Ellis was a tremendous amount of historical knowledge. That effectively left one person in the office with more than one year of experience working in the retirement office. So it was, in some senses, crippling. There was a good transfer of knowledge. Mr. Cummings from Npers was coming down on, up on a regular basis and assisting, starting in June of last year, and there was a lot of good knowledge transferred over, but there are some things that just happen every great once in the while that are difficult to address. So that was a critical piece of it. Part of, the, the other part of it on the staffing side was it did take us a while to find individuals to come into the office and provide the necessary assistance and man-hours. The labor market is very challenging at this point in time, and finding and attracting quality candidates can be a very difficult thing. We feel very good about the team that we have now. Ms. Norton has 20-plus years in HR and benefits management and has done a great job in the, in the couple of months that she's been here. I think, I hear a lot of compliments about the team from individuals who contact the office and seeking information about their plan. I hear some complaints, too, if we're being honest, but the compliments far outweigh the complaints at this point in time. So I feel we have the right team in place moving forward. The state auditor's office has a different mandate than a certified public accounting firm that comes in and does an audit. A certified public accounting firm is a for-hire firm. Sim Johnson, now Ida Bailey, does great work for us at a great price. So that come, the, the great price means that they do the work that they need to do to certify that the financial statements are materially correct and sign their name to an audit report. The state auditor's office does not have a profit motive or a time constraint necessarily. They are a public agency that has a responsibility of reviewing the books and the compliance of public entities, of which OSERS is one. And so they are not working with the same perspective that a public CPA firm does. They are very committed. I worked for the auditor of public accounts for eight years. I, I know the work that they do. It is high-quality work. It is very thorough work. Sometimes more thorough, oftentimes more thorough than a public CPA firm does.
So once the transfer occurs, I'm trying to get a sense of how much of the stuff that was identified in this audit isn't even going to be our job anymore. How much of this is actually going to be done down at Npers? And does, does our responsibility for some or all of this go away at some point?
So, the short answer is all of it goes away and becomes Npers responsibility. So our responsibility right now is to make sure things are corrected prior to handing it over. Our responsibility, as it always has been, is to accurately record the membership of OSERS, the wages earned that are subject to pension, the service time to qualify for pension benefits, and the contributions from the member and from the district. So our responsibility after September 1st will be to provide that information accurately to Npers on a monthly basis.
But keeping track of whether COLA has been computed and who has died and all of those other things.
That will be an Npers responsibility.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Mr. Ray has a question.
Mr. Ryan, when was the last time OSERS was audited by the state?
So this is the second year the state auditor's office has audited OSERS. They audited the calendar year 2021 financials and also the calendar year 2022 financials.
Thank you, and I appreciate you taking responsibility for this. It's refreshing to see somebody talk in candid terms about the status of OSERS, and I appreciate that, and you shouldn't take responsibility for something that happened in 2014, if you were not here. So thank you.
Ms. Erdenberger?
I just wanted to touch base, too, on the description of this audit that we found on the front page of the Omaha World Herald, and one of the items it identified, and I know that you communicated with our members as quickly as possible, I just wanted you to have a chance to clarify that this loss, this gap in our funding, was not something that just happened in the last couple of years in connection with this audit. It was basically reporting our pre-existing gap that we've been working on and over-contributing for the last five years, so just wanted to give a chance to give a shout-out to that situation.
Thank you, Ms. Erdenberger. Kavanaugh McDonough was here in June and provided the, their report on the actuarial valuation, and there were two significant things that happened that caused the unfunded pension liability of the district to increase significantly. One of those is the conservative reduction in the actuarial estimates moving forward. We're moving our anticipated rate of return from seven and a half percent annually on investments down to seven percent to agree with what the Nebraska Investment Council feels they should be at and what Npers will have the state teachers plan at. So as you reduce the assumed rate of return, that means you correspondingly have a greater liability because there'll be less investment income to pay those future benefit payments. The other thing that happened was one of the worst years for investments in recent The only segment of the financial market that had a positive rate of return in 2022 was commodities. Bond earnings were down. Interest rates were still low at that point in time. They obviously aren't now, but they were at historic lows during 2022. The stock market was down. It was just a terrible year on paper for investments. I have a slide here in a moment that we'll get to. This is a great year so far. Knock on wood. All sectors of the financial markets are up except for commodities, and so the market is bouncing back. The Investment Council is doing a tremendous job staying the course with a well-thought-out approach to investing the funds of not only OSERS but all of the other state retirement plans, whether those be defined benefit or defined contributions. So those two factors made for a significant increase in the net pension liability and the ARC payment. I am cautiously optimistic that that pension liability will stay steady or possibly decrease slightly, possibly slightly. I'm going to hedge significantly there, but the investment returns are good this year, and so that will help tremendously, keeping that at its current level or seeing some moderate improvement. But it's all dependent on how the rest of the calendar year finances work out. Thank you for that opportunity, Ms. Erdenberger.
Ms. Johnson has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. I don't know much of this. Mr. Ryan, I actually don't have a question. I really want to just make a comment. This is huge. It's a lot. Staffing issues are quite literally everywhere. As a teacher, I'm.
Yes.
I feel it, too. I really want to just say thank you because not only have you and Matt said it already, you not only have taken this on, but in, you said the word crippling when Ms. Carter left and, and her counterpart, and I, I actually felt that, like I knew it when it happened, and it was very unexpected from all angles, and I feel that it's something so huge and with all of the issues that have gone on, and you are taking it personally, like this is very embarrassing to see all these, this long list of things we don't want to see. I think that you are, you've taken this and run with it, and not only have you done that, you've done it pretty quickly, and you've done it with a positive attitude. So I actually just want to give you, like, a little commendation because that's a lot, like, this is so much, and it is, it's very, it's a, it's a lot of headaches, it's a lot of numbers, it's a lot of big moving parts, little, little moving parts, and for you to take, to have to dive in and to figure out the history that left the building and then also get it restaffed and, and, I mean, you've done that pretty quickly. So I just wanted to say thank you because this is huge, and I'm appreciative of it, and I know that nothing is going to be fixed overnight. We all know this, and also even with the actuaries' report, again, yes, that was a huge hit to all of us in the retirement system, and a lot of questions were asked, but I think that, again, we're human, you've said all of these things, and humans make mistakes, there's always going to be error, and with that, don't take on, we can only control what we can control, and, and we can't control the stocks, and we can't control, you know, all those things out there in the world, but what you have done is taken the issues that we can control, and you've really taken them head-on, and you've really given them the priority that they deserve, and I feel like my constituents would be very appreciative of it. Again, nothing's going to change overnight, and everything is going to take some time, but I think that you have done it in a timely manner so that, fingers crossed, knocking on wood, by the time September 1 gets here of next year, we are ready to roll. So I just really wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I appreciate that greatly. It's, there are great people that work here at OPS at all levels and in all areas, and we've got a great team working in the retirement office right now. We've got a great team working in IMS and in payroll and in HR and benefits that are committed to the transition. I, I know the district is firmly committed in its fiduciary responsibility to all of our active members and our retirees. That's why we've made $10 million in payments on top of the ARC payments the last two years, and we will fully fund the ARC payment in future years as long as I am here.
Excellent. Any further questions? Ms. Block?
Your microphone, please, Ms. Block. Thank you.
With the closing of the fiscal year that we just went through, looking at the calendar and next year, the 30th is on Friday, that preceding Monday is Labor Day, and when we shut down for this past fiscal year, we had to be out of the system one day prior. I was wondering if that could be the same effect that would occur when we change bands from current band to one of the higher bands.
Okay. So an 8/31 year-end and a 9/1 start with Npers has its challenges. Looking back to Ms. Erdenberger's question on that July 1 Go Live date, we will have data down to Npers prior to September 1, right? So we aren't going to send them, here's all the data on September 1, now it's yours. They're going to have it. I mentioned the parallel processing, so I anticipate by the time we get to that September 1, they're going to run all the same processes that we run down here, and then we're going to compare notes and make sure that everything looks the same. So those two days of inactivity, for us to close the fiscal year-end books won't impact the transition. We're already in discussions on what the right thing to do is for that September 3 payment to make sure that it's received timely, including potentially processing it at the end of August prior to the year-end, and then that way, Npers would start with a clean slate with the September 1, and they would process their first payment on October 3. So yes, those are part of the things that we look at in the transition plan. We haven't talked in great detail about everything there yet, but yes, we are aware of the challenges with the year-end there. You're welcome.
All right. Any further questions? Okay. So with that, again, thank you for the audit report and your work on that. We'll move down to the next agenda item, the administrator's report. So, Mr. Ryan?
So I'll just spend a couple minutes here, just real high level. This slide here on Slide 26 is the benefit payments made to recipients in July, August, and for September 3, and it just shows the total amount of the benefit payments, how many new recipients we have, how many recipients no longer receive payments, and any recipients that have a change. So nothing really there, just for your awareness. As we have seen some increase in the number of retirees leaving the district, we see the amount of the total monthly obligation out to our retirees increasing almost on a monthly basis. For refunds in June, July, and August, we processed 92 total refunds totaling $1.4 million in contributions and $300,000 in interest. And then, very small print, just a snapshot of the financial statements for OSERS that are being presented to the Board of Education this evening for their review. The overall balance is down year-over-year on this presentation. However, the investment activity has a two-month lag, and investments have increased since then, but just the financial statements for your review, please feel free to reach out with any questions you might have on that. So last slide, we had a Nebraska Investment Council meeting today. Aon Hewitt provides a financial review of the performance of the assets invested by the Investment Council, and they had a June 30 quarter-ending update on the returns. So the total market value of the OSERS portfolio as of June 30 was $1,485,982 million, or $82,000, excuse me. That was up 3.6% for the quarter, 6.9% for the fiscal year September 1 to June 30, 8.8% year-over-year, and 8.6% returns annually over the last three years. I'm going to stop there because what happened in the past is terrible. That's when we had the unfortunate occurrences. What I will say, point to also is the line below that says "policy index" is what they projected we should have gotten as returns based on the benchmarks that they use. So our 3.6% So our 3.6% return in the first quarter, over one quarter, was actually 4 tenths of a percent higher than the benchmarks that they compare our investment activity to. Similarly, for the fiscal year-to-date and year-to-date and three-year-to-date amounts, the NIC investment portfolio and strategies are outperforming market indexes that they compare them to. That's great news. That means that Npers has, or, excuse me, the NIC has a sound strategy and has a good portfolio that's widely diversified in several segments of the market. So while we had significant negative returns during calendar year 2022, those have by and large bounced back and were at or exceeding expectations. And so with that...
Excellent. Did I cut you off?
Yep.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ryan on the administrator's report? I remember Aon here, came here some time ago, and they were pretty pessimistic about the, the returns, so it's nice to see they're exceeding that. So no questions? All right. So with that, we'll go ahead and conclude the meeting. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Omaha School Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees will be held on Thursday, December 7, 2023, at 4:00 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the retirement office at the Teacher Administrative Building during regular working hours. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Ms. Erdnberger moves, seconded by Mr. Head. With that, Mr. Ryan, if you'd call the roll.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Ms. Erdnberger?
Yes.
Ms. Block? Mr. Head?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Six ayes, Mr. Born.
Thank you. We are, we are adjourned.